Good afternoon, everyone. I know we don't have a whole lot of people with us. But I will be recording this and it'll be put into Google Classroom when we're done. So I'm gonna go over some key points. Try and jog your memory or re-cement that in your brain. It'll help you with the test. So if you're not able to join us right now, I would recommend watching this video before you take the test, which we're doing on Thursday. Alright. So when someone does an abstract of title, just remember that that's done through public records. It's not done through any other means. You might see something like that on the test. It's done through public records. So abstract and title, public records. In a description of land, remember it's earth surface extending downward to the center of the earth and upwards to infinity. And any natural objects that are on that property, like trees, water, rocks, stuff like that, that would be in the description of the land. Let's say the two people are joint tenants and one of them dies. His share of the property would pass over to the other tenant immediately. You wouldn't have to go through probate. You wouldn't have to do any of that. So if they're joint tenants and one of the joint tenants dies, yeah, their share gets passed over to the other tenant. And also remember manufactured housing, that could be a personal property or real property. It just depends on if it's on wheels or if they filed the paperwork saying that it was this or that. So mobile homes can be either. Manufactured homes can be either. Uh, let's see. When you're conveying a property, just keep in mind that anything in the property will convey in the contract. So just remember it'll convey.
We just lost you. So like right after manufactured homes, you went offline completely. But you're back. All good now. But just the last thing that you said, we didn't hear.
Okay, alright, I'll redo it. So you said I left off?
Manufactured home.
Manufactured housing, okay. So when you're conveying a property or when you're selling a property, just remember everything will convey unless it's stipulated in the exclusions. So anything like fixtures, appliances, stuff like that, anything that's attached to property will convey with the property unless it's in exclusion. And remember that real property is conveyed by a deed and personal property is conveyed by a receipt. That's key there. You will need to know that. Okay, we went over abstracted title. Joint tenants. Remember community property? That's property that's been acquired by a husband and wife. But if you were to convey that property to someone else, you wouldn't need the signatures of both of the husband and wife. You can't convey it with just one signature. You need both. Remember tenancy by entirety? That's only husband and wife as well. So community property is husband and wife. Tenancy by the entirety is also husband and wife. Corporations or businesses like that, they cannot do a tenancy by entirety. It's restricted only husband and wife. See. And I told you an abstract of title is done through the public records. What an abstract of title basically is, it just summarizes the events or anything like that that's going to affect title. That is what an abstract of title is. So anything that will affect the title, an abstract of title or a title search is done. And when it's done, you'll get anything that's needed that will affect the title. The three physical characteristics of land? Indestructibility, scarcity, or sorry, immobility, indestructibility, and uniqueness. Because you can't move the property, you can't destroy the property, and each property is unique. Those will be your physical characteristics of land. Just remember that. Also, government powers such as police power. Police power is they do zoning and building codes.
We just lost you again. Yeah, after abstracted title, you finished that definition, but then we lost you.
I'm sorry. I guess we're having some bad connections right now.
Yeah, you're clear when you're talking and stuff, but it's just you'll just like pop off and then pop back.
How long am I out? Just a couple of seconds?
Literally enough time for like one definition, it seems like. Like it's maybe like 30 seconds.
Alright, we'll keep an eye on it. Sorry about that. When did I leave off indestructive?
Abstracted title.
Abstracted title. Okay, so yeah, abstracted title. Now, the three physical characteristics of land is gonna be immobility. You can't move the land. Indestructibility, you can't destroy the land, and uniqueness. So there's three characteristics. You can't move it, you can't destroy it, and every property is unique. Those are the physical characteristics of land.
What was the second one?
Indestructibility. And police power. Police power basically, see him up? Police power, basically they deal with zoning and building codes. They deal with safety hazards. And they also deal with the general welfare of the public and protection of the public as well. So police power, zoning, zoning and safety hazards and building codes as well as as well as general welfare and protection of the public. Remember involuntary and voluntary liens? When you get a lien on your house, say for a mechanic's lien or something, that would be an involuntary lien because it's attached to the property because you didn't pay. A voluntary lien would be an example like a mortgage. You voluntarily took the loan and you're voluntarily paying the money. So there's involuntary and voluntary. Just make sure you know the differences between the two. And when a mortgage is attached to a property, it becomes a lien. So anything that's attached to the deed that you have to pay is going to be a lien. And when you're paying your mortgage, you're paying your promissory note. Remember that. Promissory note. Yeah, so some involuntary liens, like I said, the mechanic's lien would be involuntary. IRS liens, mechanic's liens, tax liens, anything like that would be involuntary. Mortgage lien would be voluntary. And remember an easement is the access of another's property. So say a property is landlocked and the only way to get to the property is through someone else's someone else's land, you would have to get an easement that would allow you to access your land. So easement is the use of another person's land. And there's several one, like necessity, easement by necessity, that's you need it. You can't get to your land any other way. There's also prescription, condemnation, and gross. Just be aware of those. Prescription would be like everyone's seen you do it, seen you walk across their property for years, so you automatically have an easement. Easement by condemnation would be like maybe the state or something trying to require you to they need an easement to get to a certain property or something like that. That would be a condemnation one. Let's see. So we talked about easement and encroachment. Remember an encroachment is something that's encroaching or on someone else's property. So say I have some trees that I planted and over time they grew up. And the branches started going over to someone else's property. The branches that are over their property is technically an encroachment because it's encroaching onto their land. And the seller or the other party could ask you to trim those because it's encroaching on their property. So remember encroachment.
Could that also be like, even if it's not like over their property, but if you had something that was like heavily shedding or blooming or anything getting onto their property, could that classify as that too or no?
You could probably make a case for it. I don't know how well it would hold up, but you could probably make a case for it since technically there's, you know, stuff from their land is going on your land. If it gets excessive, I'm sure you could. But most of the time, people aren't gonna go through all that just to, you know, say, this is all my land. You're dropping leaves on my land, but you might be able to do that. Answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so encroachments, anything that's on their land that's from your land. So also you'll need to know the ways that like erosion, accretion, and avulsion. You'll need to know those. Those are, we all know erosion. Water and other wind and stuff like that is eroding away land, so it reduces the land. Accretion is the increase of the land because of deposits from maybe a river or something like that. Something came down and deposited on your land, increasing the overall land amount. And then avulsion is the sudden removal of land such as like a landslide or sinkhole or a, like a earthquake, anything like that. That's gonna be avulsion. So know the differences between those. Also remember if you're having to use like a state water source and you want to use a state water source, you need to prove that it's for a beneficial use such as irrigating crops or something like that. If you do prove that it's for that kind of use, you're gonna go through and you're gonna get a doctrine of prior appropriation. That's what it's called when you file to request the use of water that's owned by the state. Or possibly by an individual owner as well. Remember RESPA or the Real Estate Settlement Procedures Act? That's to regulate the real estate field and to ensure that all buyers know the costs that are involved for settling out on a house. Any settlement charges, any charges like that. RESPA was created to make sure that the buyers know the amounts that they will be charged. Bilateral and unilateral. Remember bilateral is two, there's two parties to the contract. Unilateral would be a one-party contract. Remember uno, one. Bilateral, two. Void, valid, voidable, void and executed. You'll need to know the difference between those. Remember, a contract is valid if it has all the elements of a contract. It's voidable. If they say voidable, it's usually gonna be a question about a minor, you know, because he's too young to buy.
Okay, we're back. Sten will be back in just a second. He stood out for just a minute.
We're back?
Yeah, we're good.
I'm sorry about that, guys. We're having serious issues with the internet. Oh, yeah, dude. Probably looking at her roof. Okay. Where did we leave off? Do you know when I cut out?
Oh, no, no.
We were on bilateral and unilateral.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, so yeah, bilateral, two parties to the contract, unilateral is one. Valid, voidable, and void contracts. So a valid contract has all the elements required for a contract. Voidable, as I was saying, it's usually gonna involve a minor because the minor is too young. He can void that at any time. So when it says voidable, it's probably gonna be dealing with a minor. Void, it means that it's missing one or all of the elements of a valid contract. So just know the differences between those. Also remember that the broker lawyer committee is the one that drafts the forms. And then TREC is the one that actually promulgates the forms and standardizes the forms. So broker lawyer committee creates, drafts them, and TREC or the Texas Real Estate Commission will promulgate them. Let's see. We were talking about assignment. So assignments where you assign. You release some interest in a property to another. But when you assign a contract, it doesn't necessarily release the original person from there. What are we on? Are we on the 2.4G?
No, we're on 5. Let me change it to the extension.
Yeah, yeah, change it to the extension.
It says there's no internet on the 5G one. Oh, nevermind, we're back. It said there wasn't and then right as I clicked away from it, it got connected. There we go.
Okay, we're good. Okay, hopefully that holds. We switched Wi-Fi's. Where was I when I left off? Did I say broker lawyer committee? I'm so sorry, guys.
You said broker lawyer committee and then you were talking about TREC.
Okay, so broker lawyer committee will draft the forms and TREC will promulgate the forms. So remember that. Broker lawyer committee is the one that actually writes the forms and TREC will standardize them or promulgate them. When you assign your interest of a property to another person, that's called assignment. It doesn't necessarily release the original person from their obligations in the contract. It's just moving away interest to another. If both parties decide and agree to terminate a contract, that's termination by mutual agreement because they both agreed on it. It's mutual. So remember, mutual agreement, both of the parties agree to terminate. The normal option, option period, the normal option period is seven days usually. So just remember that. If you're doing an option period, it's normally seven days. Sometimes it can go to 10, but it's generally a seven days for the option period. So a listing agreement and an agency contract, those are employment contracts. Okay, so they're a little different from some of the other contracts that are just between the broker and the buyer and stuff like that. It's an actual employment contract. So a listing agreement and a buyer agency agreement are employment contracts. Leasehold estates. Some examples of a leasehold estate would be an estate for years, an estate from period to period, so they're renting period to period, or an estate at will, which just means they they're probably doing month to month or however long that they want, they can do it. That'd be an estate to will, and those are examples of leasehold estates. A valid contract, it cannot be with a minor. Obviously, you can't have a valid contract with a minor. You can't have a valid contract with someone who has a mental disease. You can't do a valid contract with them. You can't do a valid contract if the person signing the contract is inebriated. That's not a valid contract either. So stuff like that, you need to know what would actually be a valid contract? So there's certain things like that. Say someone has Alzheimer's disease that you can't do a valid contract with someone like that. Or if they're drunk or on some drugs at the time, then also that. So just know an example of someone that would be a valid contract would just be, say Travis. He's a clear mind. He's an adult. He's of age. He's not drunk right now. So he can sign a, you're not drunk right now, right?
I'm good. Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. So he could sign a contract. That'd be a valid contract. So the special provisions paragraph of a contract, that is for factual statements only. Just remember that. Special provisions, factual statements. That's what goes in there. Okay, we went through personal property. Remember executed and executory? Executory is it's in the process, the contract is in the process of being done, but it hasn't been fully completed yet. Say you haven't gotten the deed or you haven't gotten the title. That would be executory. Executed would be all, everything's done. We've signed, we've closed, we've got our title, all of that. That would be executed. So executory is in the process. Executed is complete. So TREC has promulgated forms, but they also have approved forms. Forms that are approved that are approved by them but not actually promulgated by them. Promulgated forms you must use while approved forms you can use. You don't have to. You just can. They're approved. They're approved for use by real estate agents, but they're not required to. So there's TREC promulgated and TREC approved. Statute of frauds, that's a big one. Remember, all contracts must be in writing to be enforceable by the law. So there's a statute of limitations we talked about in class. That one's if one party were to breach a contract, it limits how long you're able to actually file a complaint. And it's generally four years. You have four years from the time the breach of contract to actually put in a a complaint about it to TREC. So four years is the statute of limitations. During the option period, the buyer can terminate the contract for any reason at all, even if he just decided he doesn't want anymore. He's in his option period. He has the option to terminate for anything. So be aware of that. If you entered into a contract, say you're buying a property and the seller in the middle of the contract decides that he doesn't want to sell anymore, but you're past the option period, at that point, you can sue the seller for specific performance which you can either force the sale of the home or you can get money for any damages that you occurred during that time. Once you're past option, the seller is locked in. You cannot back out. The buyer may still be able to, but the seller cannot. Yeah, so when you're suing for someone like that, it would be a suit for a specific performance. You're suing them to perform the specific thing, which would likely be the sale of their home. So remember that's a suit for specific performance. And that usually deals with conveyance of the property. See, a contract for deed or an installment contract, those are just two different ways to sell real estate. And it involves where the seller is still, is also working as the lender. So it's seller finance. That would be a contract for deed and installment contract. Be seller finance. Our seller is the lender on that situation. Are we still on? Good?
Yeah.
So let's say you're in a contract, both parties have signed, and you've already passed title to the buyer. And let's just say the home gets destroyed by a fire or something like that. The seller would still actually be responsible. The seller would still actually be responsible for the damages, they would take that loss. Also remember an option to purchase the contract. It's basically you, you, you have an option, you're, you're renting, but you have the option to purchase the house if you decide to. So you could be renting for a while and say, hey, I wanted, I actually like this property, I want to buy it. An option to purchase contract will give you that right, gives you the option to purchase the house if you decide to. If you, excuse me, if you fail to perform something that is agreed in a contract, you are what's called in default. So if you fail to do anything that was required on the contract, you are in default, which is a breach of contract. Also, if you were to do, if you were to have a contract for an unlawful act, or something that you know, like we were saying in class, if they were to grow weed on the property, here in Texas, that would be a void contract. Remember, I was talking about valid void and voidable. An unlawful act would fall under the void category. Also remember the unauthorized practice of law. You can't, you can't give, or you can't you can't practice law, you can't draft forms, anything like that. So anything, anything that would be considered practicing law would follow under the law, unpractice, unauthorized practice of law, and you could be fined and lose your license. And also, if they find that it is, in fact, you were practicing law, it's actually a federal offense too, I believe. So know the practice, unauthorized practice of law. Deceptive, deceptive trade practices act, the DTPA. Remember that you can sue for three times damages. So DTPA deceptive trade practices, you can sue up to three times damages. I get, say I, I get I tried to purchase a property for a hundred thousand and it falls through, or they deceptively, they do something deceiving, then I could sue them for $300,000, because that's triple of what the hundred is. So if a buyer makes an offer and the seller doesn't want to accept that offer, they want to change something in the contract, that they would send what's called a counter offer. And once you send a counter offer, usually the seller cannot back out of it. If the other buyer decides, okay, I'm just going to accept your counter right away, then you're locked into that contract as a seller. So if you're making a counter to someone's offer, it would be called a counter offer. Statute of frauds, everything must be in writing. If both buyer and seller agree to remove something on a property before title is transferred, then you would address that in the sales contract. Like we said, under exclusions, that would be under exclusions. See, the legal descriptions of properties. One we use here in Texas quite a bit is the rectangular government survey system. That uses north, south, east and west lines to identify or to describe the location of a property. So if it's using north, south, east, west, if it's using directions to describe the location of a property, that would be rectangular government survey system. Also, earnest money. We talked about earnest money, that, that basically is it's if the buyer defaults, the seller can keep that earnest money as, you know, for damages or remedy, anything that they lost or so on. So earnest money can be kept by the seller if the buyer defaults. See, we went over promulgated forms. Contingency contracts, that's something that's added to a contract that's contingent upon this being completed before the contract can go through. So say I, I'm trying to sell my property, I'm contingent to sell my property before I can buy yours. That would be a contingency. And you would use a Trek promulgated form to add that contingency to the contract. All right, if you do have a contingency, it's avoidable contract. You can say, let's say I get a better offer than what the offer, the contract I'm in with the contingency. I can tell that other party that they need to either remove the contingency, or I'm going to go with the other offer. So if there is a contingency, you can void that contract at any time if you're the seller. So if you decide to, yeah, like I said, if you get a better offer, you can tell them, hey, you got to remove this. If you don't, then we're terminated in the contract. It is avoidable contract. Also remember that a contract is not binding if you have not informed the other party that, that you have received the contract. So even if you get a contract, you get everything done, and you go and receive it, you're not actually under contract until the other party has been notified. If they haven't been notified and you're, you've been under contract a few days, they can void the contract, because they were never even told that the, that the transaction was going on. Remember lead pa, lead based paint disclosure? Lead based paint is anything before January 1st, 1978. You will need to know that date, not just for the final, but also for the test, for your licensing exam.
That's another question that I think everybody I've talked to has been asked.
Yep.
Okay, some sort of, some sort of nineteen, January 1st, 1978 has come up to every test I've seen.
It's pretty much guaranteed going to be there, just no lead based paint disclosure, January 1st, 1978. In order to sue under the deceptive trade practices, you will have to prove that the real estate professional or the real estate person actually committed an unconscionable act. I mean, sorry, not, not committed an unconscionable act, they committed it knowingly. You have to prove that they knowingly deceived you to be awarded that three times damages for suit. So that as long as you can prove that they did it knowingly, and they knew what they were doing when they did it, you can get that three times damages. A document that addresses like additional material that needs to be added to a contract is an addendum. If you're adding things to a contract, addendum, add addendum. If you're changing something into a contract, it's going to be an amendment. Amendment is to change, addendum is to add. Okay, we talked about promissory notes, void and voidable. A deed of trust is a little different. It's not a bilateral contract. A deed of trust will actually have three parties involved. It's going to be the trustee, the trustor, and the beneficiary. So there's three parties involved in a deed of trust, not two, not one, three. Remember the amortized loan? An amortized loan just means that it's you're paying off the principal and the interest of the loan, you pay it partially. And each payment is going to be set out. You'll know what your payments are in an amortized loan. If you're buying a house, you're probably going to want to get an amortized loan. If you're only paying 5% down payment on a conventional loan, the lender will likely require you to get PMI or private mortgage insurance. So if you're putting down a small payment, only 5%, you're probably going to be required to get a private mortgage insurance or PMI. You might see it as PMI, private mortgage insurance. If, if you're urging someone to sign a contract, or if they're being pressured into signing a contract, it's called that they were under duress at the time of signing, you're under duress, and that would make the contract void. So if they're signing, being pressured, it's basically peer pressure, you're under duress, undue duress. A bargain and sale deed. Under that deed, it implies that the grantor will hold title and possession of the property, but contains no express warranties against encumbrances. So any liens or anything like that, he's got no warranties, no coverage. Remember, general warranty deed is going to be the most coverage. Bargain and sale and quick claim deeds both have pretty much no coverage at all. No warranties against anything. And also, the buyer will receive title upon the final payment of the mortgage. Or if they paid in cash, they would receive it, you know, very quickly. But if you paid with a normal conventional loan, you do not, you do not, you do not receive title to the property until you have made your final payment. Then they will send you a copy of the title and the deed. And that pretty much covers most of the stuff that I wanted to go over again. I hope that re cemented some of the stuff in your mind. If anybody on, that's with us now has any questions, you can go ahead and ask now. If not, we'll go ahead and call it. We are having the I believe we, we decided 7:30, was it 7:30 tomorrow? Yeah, right after class, we'll be starting the exam. It will be promulgated. You can either be here, or you can be in person, if you're, I mean, sorry, you can either be here, or you can be on Zoom. If you're on Zoom, we will ask you to show us your surroundings and make sure that nobody comes in. But does anybody have any questions for me right now?
I don't.
No questions, okay? I guess Shelton took off. Who's on the iPhone? Do you have any questions there?
Oh, it's me. No, I don't have any yet.
All right, guys, we're going to call it here. I'll have this video up on the Google Classroom here shortly. So thanks for coming, guys. I appreciate it. We'll talk to you all later. Adios.
Thank you. Thank you.